This will just be for an audio check right now, we're still getting set up folks, if you can give us a minute here. I won't be talking too much louder than this right here, so we're doing just a quick little sound check with a few folks that are remote right now. Please be patient about it, I'm just talking right now. Alright, I was on screen.
Yeah, I was perfect, yeah.
Well, thank you guys for coming in person, we are doing this simultaneously on Zoom as well. So anyhow, we got a little issue here, one second here.
The screen is covered with the tap.
It's on my end, I think.
Uh.
You handle that. Alright, sorry about that, I had to fix the screen so you guys can see it here locally. Anyhow, first things first, if you guys can go ahead and sign in, we have done this completely digitally now, so if you scan that QR code that's on the screen in this room right now, it'd be very easy just to fill it out real quick and I'll give you guys a quick little moment to do so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't have a phone or you want to do it old school way, I'm just gonna come around really fast and do a little signing sheet, that's all.
We'll come around afterwards to make sure everybody's signed in totally. Alrighty. So those of you that don't know, my name is Patrick Collins, I am the president of Stacey Neighbors Castleberry Hill neighborhood association. And we have Dream here who's also helping out with this as well, Dream, where's your hand?
There's your hand.
Nice seat there. Sharon, we have Sharon here, Sharon is our secretary. Alright.
Mr. President, if you want to officially.
Yes, let's kick it off, do we, uh, let's have an approval for previous minutes, does anybody need a big change for you previous minutes? Alrighty.
A second.
Alright, here a second, there we go, so now we have officially kicked it off. And as I was saying, I'm Patrick, I'm the president, we have Dream over there, we have Sharon right here, Tracy unfortunately could not be with us right now, but she has definitely helped and contributed with all of this. We make up the executive board for the Castleberry Hill neighborhood association. And again, for those that are just entering, please go ahead and sign in and get that there. We are still showing that little thing up there.
It's all good.
But it's all good, we'll make it happen, you guys can read most of it. Anyhow, hopefully everybody signed in and provided their information, but let's go ahead and get this thing kicked off here. It is on that screen, so give me one second here. We have quite a few folks online as well, in the room here, it looks like we have about a good forty to fifty right now. Alright, anyhow, let's talk about some of the past accomplishments real quick, we are very active in this neighborhood here, as you guys are all here for a specific reason. The neighborhood association is here for the preservation of the neighborhood, whether you're a business, an employee, or a resident, whether you rent, own, doesn't really matter. Anyhow, what we do is we provide and add value to the neighborhood by organizing neighborhood cleanups or talk about street improvements. And today, we're actually gonna talk about some of the construction that's happening in the area. So anyhow, here's a list of some of our past accomplishments that we have done. Alright, for those of you that are not members, please become a member, this is super important. This is basically how we can afford to do half the stuff that we do, the organization behind it, there's a lot of things that go into it, including being able to provide food for events like this, do some of the social activities like the art stroll and the loft tours and stuff like that. Anyhow, it takes a lot of effort, time, and money to do so. We do solicit money in other ways, which we'll be talking about a little bit later, but one of the other ways of doing it is through membership, so if you can, if you're not a member, please sign up. Membership will give you voting rights as well, it's twenty-five dollars for residents and a hundred dollars for businesses. Alright, city officials, I did not get a chance to actually scan the room for who came in, but we do have Officer Blue Allen here. Alright, come on up here, sir. And so we are live on camera here as well.
Hey, how you doing? Good, 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 I got my little notes for you guys. For this month, you guys had a total of forty-four crimes. Most of those crimes were shot from autos, shot from vehicles. Most of the time, it happened on evening watch, majority of the crimes. Saturday and Tuesday, which is a little strange, the Tuesday slipping in, was one of the, is the highest days that these things are happening. Times are around four PM and nine PM. Majority of the crimes you guys have is property crimes over here in this area. A lot of the time is due to, you know, all the businesses and people parking, all the businesses and people parking. And they're leaving valuables inside of the vehicle. And most of the people that walk around, most of them are homeless. A lot of them are, you know, addicted to things, and they're looking for opportunity to grab anything of value, so they could, you know, find it off or, if you used to have this for, they might be home. So, so I plead with you guys, do not leave valuable in your vehicles, that's exactly what they're looking for. Opportunity exists, they're hitting it, getting it, and they're leaving. Alright, it's very difficult to track items, you know, we track them later on down the road, by that time you've gone from buying another laptop or our phone or whatever, I'm like, okay, whatever. You know, so it's very difficult for us to get, not to catch them in the act. And saying that, I wanna let you guys know, if you see something, say something. Alright, if you see something, say something, because the more people, the more you're in the area where people know other people are looking, and they see us approaching all the time, and you're catching them all the time, they're like, okay, someone is telling us. They'll find somewhere else to go, it's all about a return, because, you know, just like we all know, crime is rampant through poverty. Alright, until we solve that poverty problem, until they have poverty. Alright, so I know, you know, a lot of us don't have a lot of money like that to solve the whole city of Atlanta poverty issue, so we have to do what we can. Alright, which is take items out of our vehicles, alright, out of plain sight. And also, if you see something, say something, we can address it, or we will address it. I'm over the fearless investigative team, alright, we deal with a lot of, you know, robbery, suspects, drugs, prostitution, we get all those things, we do a lot of undercover, undercover operations. So, if you can, write my email down. Can, I'll wait for you in there. Miss O, Blue L, L U, E L L E N, at atlantega dot com. You can email me and just give me a brief synopsis of what's going on, what's happening, and contact information, and I'll make sure I reach back and talk to you and give you more info and information. Try to solve whatever problems that we have, that y'all have, alright, hopefully, make sure everybody's happy. Any questions from here? Blue L, L U, E, L L E N, at atlantega dot com. At Atlanta, G A dot com. Any questions from here?
I'm, um, one, this street is going to come, made two ways to be in a few days. And unfortunately, what we feel has been a lot of parking on this street, so there'll be a lot of people that have, because of the possibility of that, things that, and these are gonna be increased in, this is going to be, especially now it's a bridge, so, not only is it a private bridge, but also whether or not that is going to be.
I can tell you this, we all aware of the traffic opening up, we are planning on increasing, you know, visibility of us, but once again, we are short as well, so we try to do as much as we can. The less, I know, maybe an hour to us, usually ride through here a whole lot, we're gonna try to increase that as well, and to probably deter people from doing some, you know, crazy things. And also, I'll make sure I look my major up, instead of getting help out in that memory. That's the extent of what we can do right now. Any other questions?
Yeah, the example of parking, but is the future of black or actually in the neighborhood, unless there are a lot of residences and living spaces that exist here? And a lot of people are coming into the neighborhood to, you know, support the businesses, what is the future of black parking, because I know there was a while back, there were some aid parking leaders that were solved, and they were not activating themselves, but they know, does the future of black parking?
As you can probably see, I took the point on the way, so we have a transportation meeting that will discuss all the parking, as well as the traffic flow, and as well as some of the car-related transportation needs. I think that would be a better question for that time than for Ross Thompson, who was presenting maybe, and not the other entities. And if you hang on, I'll, third of the session now, it will pop up with the meeting time and the call number.
Can I, I just wanna ask one quick question, what is the division of parking enforcement between APD and ATL Bus Parking Department?
Well, they are total separate divisions, total separate company, we got nothing to do with that. Only thing we can do is we do like winter pays, we're still, they're still up under the city, cities are purview the same, so we can do that and deal with legal parking and stuff like that. We can't deal with that, most of the time, we park Atlanta.
Generally, you park Atlanta.
Yeah, generally park Atlanta.
Three-one-one.
Right, not unless it's something that's, like you said, if it's, if it's, you know, crime-driven, if something like a bunch of cars been broken into, that's when it hits our radar. And then we'll go over and say, okay, this is the reason why people do the parking, then we'll do, we'll do winter pays and try to deter people from legal parking and get them out.
I think that's a good distinction, because I think a lot of times, people don't realize that a police officer driving by illegally parks car, you know, if you're not just.
You know, we have a whole lot of, we probably don't.
All good points, I'm actually on the call too as well, this is Russ.
Alrighty, next up, I don't know if I saw anybody come in for the, um, and, don't know if I saw any of our city council representatives, they may come in a little later. So I'm gonna just go ahead over them. There you go. So anyhow, let's start talking about our neighborhood here. First things first, we have a couple of our businesses that are gonna speak real quick, but I'd like for you to come up here and just spread a quick little, one minute. Well, you know.
Alright, so basically, I am the new owner and director of Castleberry Market. We renamed it from Castleberry Farmers Market to Castleberry Market because we're incorporating more vendors, we're doing more handmade vendors, of course, we're bringing back some more farmers, et cetera. So we are opening next Sunday, we have moved the date to Sundays from one to six, people will worship, come afterwards, a lot of food options, and a lot more, so definitely come out, support. We definitely need the support of the neighborhood to keep the vendors coming back, keeping our farmers coming back, so.
Alright.
Alright, short, short swing Sunday.
Next Sunday, what location is it?
So, we're still gonna be at the funeral hall, four ninety-two Larkin, and then we're moving to the bridge later on this Friday.
Alright, you guys heard it there, thank you so much, I'll be. One second, I gotta get this slide. Alright, we're gonna stick over five fifty, I believe, if we don't have representation here for that. So anyhow, our neighborhood is changing, so the main theme, and we're gonna start doing these meetings here, is team meetings, so just to give you a little tidbit, so you can pull away with a little nugget of what is happening in the neighborhood. And today's theme we're gonna talk about is the new development updates, alright, so the construction, the infrastructure, all the stuff that's happening around here. Go ahead, next one. There we go, so as most of you guys are aware, maybe some of you are not, Castleberry Hill is about just over a quarter square mile. We have a hundred and seventy-five businesses and twenty-five hundred residents in this neighborhood, we have seventeen entrances and exit points all throughout this neighborhood. Next slide. When you draw a one-half mile diameter, uh, sorry, one-half mile radius circle around our neighborhood, we encompass a lot of what happens in Atlanta. We basically define what Atlanta is, as, as most of you guys are aware, were used for their parking lot for a lot of the events that are here, were used for many different things, you pass through, every single car that goes through has to come through our neighborhood essentially. Up Turner or Northside Drive, next slide. So let's talk about what that consists of, and I'm not too sure why this is cut off here, but anyhow, we have six colleges and universities that are within a half mile of right where we're standing right now. Okay, that's seventy-five thousand students and staff, alright, that's a lot of people. Next slide. We are one of the largest tourist and visitor destinations in the southeast, the only one that could be named that is bigger is Disney World. Okay, we have more people coming in and out of this neighborhood than any other place in the southeast aside of Disney World. Think about it, this weekend alone, we have two basketball games, we have a soccer game, we have multiple places that are opening up, and, and having larger partying events and whatnot. So with that being said, there's a lot of people coming in and out, next slide. So, Atlanta is a developing city, and let's talk about some of the developments in particular that will be impacting us. First things first, right behind me, about thirty-five to forty feet behind me, is the new Steel Pedestrian Bridge. Um, it is officially open. Um, it's, uh, it's been closed since twenty seventeen, so it's, it's, it's brand new. We just opened it up on Friday, I believe, with the soft opening. And we're gonna do a grand opening with the mayor on four oh four day, which is April fourth. Here are a couple of images of it, if you haven't seen it, for those that are online. I know most of you guys are actually looking at it right now, here. Alright, now we have the, uh, Sydney Hotel, which is the Hilton Hotel. This hotel is gonna hold towers for, it's going to room nearly a thousand visitors to our city. And yes, it's not technically in Castleberry, but it will directly impact us, uh, by, with all the foot traffic and all the cars and everybody who's going to visit the hotel and stay at the hotel. It will be the sixth largest hotel in Atlanta, and it's over forty stories tall. A couple of images there. It's a beautiful hotel, if you haven't walked over to that area just to see how massive it is. We also have Castleberry Park Residence, uh, residency, if you will. Um, so Castleberry Park Residence, that's actually the extension that's on the Reverb Hotel. Uh, it's a huge, huge project for, uh, for them. About a hundred and twenty-five, uh, residential units. There will be some, um, there will be some eateries and restaurants on the lower levels as well. Uh, but that's projected to open at the end of this, or sorry, beginning of next year, twenty twenty-four.
Is that regular, rental or something?
That's a good question. It's, it, it's supposed to be rental, yes.
And you'll have a part.
Yes, a part, yep.
Is it a separate building from the Reverb or like?
Yep. So. Hang on one second, I'm trying to make sure to get all the questions or concerns answered. Uh, I know there will be a lot of questions about everything that we're showing. Uh, and this is just to give you guys an idea of what's happening. So, if you do have further questions, you know, either save it for later, or you can get them all answered at once, or, um, because we're on a slight time crunch here as well.
Is there anything you want to add in the food hall?
Yes, the food hall. Yes, there will be a food hall in there as well. There's lots of food and restaurants coming to within this area. That was brought up in the last meeting as well. Chapper Street, you guys heard about that earlier, that's the street right here to my right. Um, anyhow, that's going to be converted over to a two-way. That was a long effort, um, from CHNA from three years ago, uh, after we received complaints about folks parking on the street, folks making the illegal right-hand turn. Some folks didn't feel like it should have been illegal. So anyhow, that is, uh, going to happen next week, uh, on Tuesday. See if I can, this next slide will go. There we go. Um, the, uh, plan for the street conversions will be available, uh, on our website as well. You need to go see the details. It has been sent out to those that have been directly impacted. Excellent. Then we have the, uh, Russell Super Block, and that's a dumb name right now. The project doesn't have an official name that we are aware of yet. But that's gonna be down on Walker Street. It's a, uh, three acre development, over two hundred residents, and up to five businesses. Uh, the ground, the groundbreaking for that is coming very soon. Uh, they're still asking for permissions to do curb cuts as well as, uh, some other small stuff, but that is happening very, very soon. There's a couple of images of it, you guys had not seen it in previous meetings.
Do they not have to adhere to the whole neighborhood architecture?
Yes, yes, they, they do have to adhere to, uh, somewhat of the preservation of the neighborhood, yes. Continuation of the neighborhood. And that's why we're here, because we vouch for, for every other interest. Then we have the Peter Street Bridge. Right now, um, Peter Street Bridge is usable, however, it has been deemed to either be replaced or repaired, uh, very soon. Um, so eventually that bridge will either be closed for traffic or under construction. That's something that we need to consider, because it's one of our main entrance points to the neighborhood, including Peter Street. For those of you that don't know, Peter Street Bridge is, Bridge is right over there. Alright, this is probably the, uh, one of the most interesting ones that's happening in our neighborhood. This is called the Forge and Fair Bridge, okay? Uh, all of the land was acquired, uh, to start this project. Uh, it is a very large project. Basically, it's going to be a mini-city to the south of us, alright? We will have buildings that are above the five-story limit that we have currently in our neighborhood, just to the south of us. Um, fifteen hundred, um, residential units. There will be hotels down there as well, and quite a bit of space for commercial and businesses. You can see here from the rendering, how close it is to us currently. The other thing to consider as well, which you can kind of make out in the center of the screen I'm here, is there is a bridge that connects Fair Street. So there will be a new entrance point to the neighborhood. Um, just something to consider there when we discuss the stuff. Here's an overview, uh, image of the buildings and the campus essentially, of what they're doing. As you guys can see, it's a very large campus, it's a big scale thing.
Which one is that?
That is, uh, White Hall is on the south side, uh, on, is the road to the south of that. And, um, it doesn't go all the way to McDaniel's, but Fair Street is kind of centered on Fair Street. So. Yes. Alright. Alright, the most anticipated, uh, project that's going to impact us is Centennial Yards. As you guys can see, Centennial Yards is happening, it's all the things that are happening in the Gulf's development. There are going to be twenty-seven buildings that are being built in there. Um, it's a fifty-acre urban revitalization project. Uh, and we already broke ground on it, or they already broke ground on it, um, in November of last year. I actually attended the event that they broke ground at. Um, so this void that's behind us with all the parking and the tailgate that we're all used to will now be a miniaturized city. Uh, and it's a, it's a five or six billion dollar investment. This is a billion with a B. This is big time money. It's a lot of, the city's throwing funds at it, uh, multiple companies are throwing funds at it. This is a big, big thing for us. Twenty-seven new buildings, one point eight million, or one point two, sorry, yeah. Millions of square feet. Forty-eight acre development, residential hotels, commercial, I mean, it's, it's going to be very, very large. Multiple restaurants and businesses. Um, and let's take a look at some of the stuff. So, two of the things that they are, two of the towers, two of the buildings that they are projecting to have complete prior to, uh, the FIFA World Cup is the Anthem, uh, establishment. So, the Anthem Establishment, you can see the two towers right there. One of those is gonna be residential, one of them is gonna be a hotel. And you can see the renderings of how they fit into the neighborhood, just right here. Through quite a few images in there, there's a lot of renderings that are available online, if you need to see them. Uh, another development, which is to the right of us right here, this empty lot right here, is eighty-eight Elliot Street. Eighty-eight Elliot Street will be a combination residential and, uh, restaurants as well. Um, it's a very small footprint, but there's a lot of stuff that's happening over there. Go ahead and advance that slide there. You can see some of the renderings of the building there. Um, a couple of the tenants that are, uh, actually signed up for are, um, Brian Husburgers, as well as Black Coffee, which is currently in Castleberry, but they're moving locations to this prime spot. Alright. Um, even though South Downtown is not part of Castleberry Hill, um, the South Downtown developments are going to impact us. So Newport Holdings actually, uh, is going to revitalize, I think it's fifty-three or fifty-seven buildings? Somewhere around there, it's a lot of buildings that they're working on downtown. We have a couple of renderings to show you guys of that as well, fifty-three buildings, there we go. Um, it's gonna be existing buildings and new reconstructs. You can see there's some towers that are present in these images and renderings, but they're not currently there. Um, lots of restaurants and shops, well over a thousand living spaces. Uh, this is gonna be really big. They actually have a website, which we can link you guys later, or when you go back to review the slides. You can see the website and all their developments that they plan on having there. Mitchell Street is going to be transformed. Mitchell Street is the first street, once you leave our neighborhood, um, and you can see there that they're basically building a mini Ponce, mini Ponce City Market there. Uh, they'll have a bowling alley, multiple restaurants, street, uh, fanfare per se. Uh, it's, it's really a big thing. Um, again, another big thing that's happening for our neighborhood that will directly impact us. See some of the images there, alright. Um, Underground and Five Point Station. So, with all of these buildings, they need to accommodate for all of the transportation needs of everybody. And one of the things that they will be doing is revamping the Five Point Station in the Underground area. Now, we do have some confirmed information and some unconfirmed information, but essentially, this is the image of the before for, uh, Five Point Station. It's very, it's cemented, it's lots of cement, you know, just bricks all over the place. Here's the, the Jack Woods. Um, and the, if you're familiar with that, with the station there, those bus lanes, that's the same road that the buses are on right now. Um, so they're adding a lot of greenery, a lot of, uh, they're, they're still keeping the, uh, the soccer fields, the soccer pitch. But as you can see, they're adding a lot of greenery and, and really opening it up there. A lot of things are happening in that little area there. We got Greyhound and Garnet, again, another transportation update here. So the Greyhound station, if you guys have not been over to the Greyhound station, they've already started construction. I would say they're probably about sixty percent done, seventy percent done with that, with those buildings there. Um, but the Greyhound station and Garnet are another couple of projects that they're working on. There we go there. Um, you can see the images there on the left versus the image of what it was, or what it formed in. Huge, huge difference there. Huge, huge difference. There we go. And last but not least, we have Larry Flop that's being built from the south side of our neighborhood, over at three forty-six Peter Street, it's gonna be twenty-seven units. And we have a couple of images of Larry Flops. Just one. Anyhow, as you guys can see, these changes are coming, they're here. Um, if, sorry, I can go back. Um, these changes are here, they're coming, so we need to get involved, and that's really where we need your help. Um, we can influence the change to our benefit. We don't always have to live with the things that are happening around us just to complain about it. So, what we're, what we're here to do is gather us all together to make sure that we can work on it. And Drew, before we, before you go up, let's, yeah. We're gonna go back in time a little bit here, because we have old representation from city councilor members here as well. Alright. Misha, I'm gonna let Misha go first, you know, I gotta let the emails go before that. Sorry, I'm kidding, and I did see, uh, Mr. Anderson here. Oh, you're waiting on Jason, no problem, alright, DJ, or Mr. Anderson.
We are live, you guys can stand right here.
Alright, good.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, good evening, of course, DJ Jeez, actually, absolutely, we're all in this is free. Um, I did have a couple of updates, so on the apartment to the neighborhood, some, of course, related to the entire city. But today, the American Council makes, or their full time meeting, and it will take place at City Hall. So there were a couple of legislative items that were due during, of course, that meeting. First one was a resolution, uh, an ordinance that actually sponsored that purchases two hundred and thirty cards for the Atlanta Police Department. Um, that was here for, it was actually two hundred and ten in total, with two separate pieces of legislation, one of which was a nomination that was a total of ten cards, then another that was actually purchased. Um, there will be some delay to getting those cards to the police officers, for the reason being is because, um, the actual things that the police need to effectively do their job, of course, on that order, due to co-attended and, um, of course, supply chain issues. The second one, as we all know, um, and I'm sure you probably see the update about it, is Chapper, Chapper Street conversion, that's something that Patrick and you were taking over last year, working on, that will begin construction at the end of this month. So please be patient with the O T, as they convert Chapper Street to the two-way street. That way you can come up and, of course, turn the parking thing on that way, as needed for stadium committees. The last one that I will talk about is actually a state legislative item, but there was legislation today that went through council, um, specifically spoke to a stadium search charge for any stadium that exceeds the passing of property. So of course, that would impact me for Mercedes-Benz Stadium, and that's a cop名义 search charge. But that cop名义 search charge for any ticket that you purchase will be an additional search charge that will go directly to public safety to access and be able to, um, maintain the safety around the stadium. As we were saying, um, of course, numerous, um, incidents and accidents happen around stadium, which drain the resources from other places in order to make up that cost of those coming into the city. We think you should always have to pay to, to come to this event. And so, uh, yeah, pretty much. Uh, hello, everybody, I know it's kind of strange, and I understand him giving a report, but I didn't know I was on May today. But I am here, uh, one of the things that I, that you definitely need to know, is I had a conversation with Mark, and they wanted to talk about existing conditions. Our mind is totally focused on twenty twenty-six World Cup. Because, and believe it or not, they had not even started a conversation about the transportation plan. And we all know you cannot break up to do a transportation plan in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six World Cup, and only people gonna suffer, Vine City, Castleberry, English Avenue, downtown. So finally got them into that conversation mode, and I knew via your leadership, to see what the traffic plans look like, because we already know it don't work on Falcons, baby. I agree, it comes to Falcons game. So you got everybody in the world coming to the World Cup. You know, so what traffic is going to look like? So we started that conversation, so that's, that's pretty much it. Uh, any questions or?
How are we gonna make sure that some of that money that's gonna be coming in is not earmarked in the neighborhood? To make sure we're able to get in and out of our, from lenders, off of games, everything, ninety games. We already have difficulty getting here, cops tell me to come back later, spin the block. While times increases, that I cannot get the model complete. So how are we gonna make sure that some of that money is dedicated to making sure that those that are directly affected are taken care of during ninety-nine? Like, all the other World Cups, it's gonna affect my college, like, for that period of time.
So, we, we are quite a ways away from being there, and the reason I say that, what the resolution we passed today is just to support the bill that's on the state level. So it still need to make it through the state for it to happen. That's where the science is really made, because once it is, once it is put in code, now the municipalities have a choice to say where we wanted to go, how much it's going to be, and things of that nature. So when that comes around, that's where you have to input, because we already know, we better have enough officers working the zones now. So they're already taxed and stressed, so you throw Atlanta United this weekend, first game on top of it, and the, and the ongoing conversation we're having is Mercedes-Benz, yes, you hire your off-duty police officers, but then they get there and only feel like they work for Mercedes-Benz. You know, so, so to answer your question, we're quite a ways away, we need to get that down to the city level. But the bill is structured to, the money for the money of the state and the area around the complex or the property that it was actually made of.
The police should have contacted us, I guess, as things progress. Does it know, because I don't want it to become a, we missed the opportunity, because we had the opportunity.
Congress, and Congress, that. Yeah, and that's a start, calling the state rep, so you already have that. But definitely, I mean, every, people that know me, you know, I'm right over here in Vine City, so I get slammed when you get slammed. I probably get slammed worse, I'm five hundred feet away from Don and Alan, so whenever it's open, I would get introduced to. Um, so yeah, just call your state rep, and your state senator to start with, and then let's get that down to the city level. Whether you get to Jason or I do. Really, Jason, I'd be there. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marry.
Good morning.
Hi. I wanted to ask you, my name is Roz Olver. And I wanted to ask you, realizing that we're trying to develop a smart city, right? In need of smart neighborhoods. But what I would encourage any of the legislators is to include the people who live within those neighborhoods or cities when making decisions that can have a negative impact on quality of life. And so I'll go as more detail for the Urban Utilities Committee here for this. And you, for that, because it's something that's personally I just do. So that is something I wanna ask of you, you know, more than anything, is to kind of listen to us, engage us, you know, in that, and not lean for the sense that it becomes a win-win situation, not necessarily one, a win-lose situation, you know, that is occurring. As we're growing, whether it's continual yards or any of the other infrastructure initiatives that are getting ready to take place within Castleberry or around Castleberry, to impact Castleberry, it's important to listen to those that are here, because we may have a solution as well that help resolve and allow them to still thrive while we also thrive as well. Thank you.
Really.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we will call up Ms. Misha Lesbichus from council member Jason. Those are your office, that is district number four. Thanks so much again.
Hi, everyone. My name is Misha Lesbichus. I manage community engagement for council member Jason Dodger. He works in District Four, which is pretty much the southern side of Marcellary Village. So a couple of things we wanted to share. The first one is he was very tired of drilling you all last month at Atlanta Tucky. He had great time, and so that he was really great event. He's looking forward to our opportunities to see you all. The Nelson Street Bridge is finally reopened. Hey, if you don't know, this is Nelson Street Bridge. The official dedication will be in April, but these last six, Castleberry and downtown, we can make it. We are aware of a water charge issue at one ninety locker and are working with the residents there to resolve it. We had abandoned cars on Peter Street toll last week. Watershed did some repair work on Peter Street last year, and it seems to be having some issues. So they're working with Watershed Management to come back out and get it adjusted. And he wanted to remind all of the businesses to use three one one if you're having any type of city related issues, so dumping or things like that to, to follow three one one. The last thing I'll add is that our office made a fifty thousand dollar donation to House Proud. If you aren't familiar with House Proud, they are an organization that supports our seniors in aging in place. So if you are a senior in Atlanta and you own your home and you need some support, like your roots have a hole, we had a senior recently that had a huge hole in the middle of her living room floor, and she has mobility issues. The seniors who have step down front that are not kept well, they are a organization that goes in to repair those things from a non-profit standpoint. And so our fifty thousand dollar donation goes specifically to the seniors in District Four that are sitting on the wait. So they open application, do apply, and as they get funding, they come in and repair their items. So it seems that we have a large track off here in the district, and so we have given fifty thousand dollars for that. Additionally, the city has authorized another donation from the housing trust fund that the city has to go to House Proud for seniors across the city. And we're working to secure some more funding to be able to help warm our community patiently. So for those of you that maybe aren't aware, our fans come on a trip to each thing in Atlanta, especially with accidents and everything else. So we're very excited about the donation and the work that House Proud does for our seniors, particularly in District Four, we have a lot of them. So, thanks. Thank, yes, that's the last thing. If you have any questions? Marry.
Thank you very much. Want to go ahead and give our city councilor, the representatives around the block, please? We're not gonna go into the slightly boring stuff, which are the committees. But it'll be quick. We're a little bit in the schedule to feel a, sooner than later, so I'll still jump right in. So Castleberry Liberty Association, we now have eight committees. If you know what a committee is, or if you don't know what a committee is, the committee is basically a focus group or a focus area. And at these committee meetings, you wanna view them more so as work sessions. This is where the real work is done in the neighborhood. So we're talking about installing trash cans, we're talking about meeting with different developers or utilities companies. That's where these committees really shine. So when we go through them, I'll kind of, more, more, so they're sacred, security committee. So within that committee, there's four focus areas. There's police and crime, fire, emergency medical services, and code enforcement. And just to say, as we go through, it's kind of to find out what interests you most. You don't have to cover everything. No one's asking you to be the chair of a committee unless you really wanna be the chair of a committee, letting you know. But it's just finding areas that really interest you, that either maybe that you're interested in, or you even have a passion for. So again, when you're looking at these, those are just the focus areas. Yeah, so the infrastructure, that's gonna be dealt with our trash and sanitation. So if you're into neighborhood cleanup, you do a lot of those every single year. That, this is gonna be your committee. Water and sewer issues, energies, that's gonna be electric and gas. We have a lot of power lines in our neighborhood. There's both companies in town where the city or even utilities companies are looking to bury these power lines. And then there's also broadband. That's what I think is Roslyn, is that correct? Because Roslyn was talking about, in our neighborhood right now, we have cell towers in different places. So we need to be on top of that and moving forward, ensuring that these cell towers are not right in front of people's windows, emitting different radiation, et cetera. So in, these, and there's also a few people in the neighborhood that have done a great job coordinating with our sanitation companies. I know that there was a dumpster that they got cleaned up, right over by Cincinnati Station. So if any of these is used trash water, this is gonna be your committee, utilities and infrastructure. Our planning committee, our planning committee, if you look on here, there's gonna be events. So we're talking about law tour, we're bringing back art stroll. If you're interested in those, and how many people are here every single day, this is gonna be your committee, please, and thank you, Simon Ford. This committee is also gonna talk about membership and communications. So I'm sure as of right now, we now have received more notices, newsletters, monthly notices, notices for even this meeting today. We're gonna be doing a lot more notices, and that's gonna be where our marketing and communications really shines. And then, of course, we have our marketing and design, that's our membership and communication. And then we have our marketing and design. Miss Diane is here. She handles our amazing website and does a great job with it. So we pretty much have a lot of our design down, but please don't be discouraged. We still want more designers, graphics, people that are into copyright. Reach out to Diane, she'll get you set up. Reach out to me, but do keep in mind, this is Castleberry, it's arts district, so we have more than enough creativity to make this happen. And then lastly, there is film production. Right over here is Carrie Berman, if you wanna raise your hand. She's done a great job just over the years, really creating infrastructure that will be in the neighborhoods, heat films, coming, and also the heat on quarterly. In addition to that, though, we really wanna add, I think, her and I talked a little bit more about getting more people involved with the movies, with the film, with the production. So if that's something that you're interested in, please reach out to me, please reach out to Carrie Berman also. Ladies, this is the fun part. Those that are into zoning and variances, that's gonna be you. If you're into restrictions on buildings in the neighborhood, that's also you. Historic preservation. As many of us know, not all of us, Castleberry Village, one of seven, maybe eight, that are recognized historic districts in all of the city of Atlanta. So historic preservation is huge here. I won't really go into the zoning that we have, but I will say there's a lack of heat in, means enforcement. When it comes to removing windows, when it comes to buildings, someone mentioned earlier, ensuring that has the character of the building, really, um, matches the neighborhood. This is really gonna be that committee. And then we also have green space conservation. So that's gonna be parks and also trees in the neighborhood. If you like planting trees, you can bring it to, um, turn it green space, adding more green space, dog park green space. That's gonna be you. So that's ladies. Transportation, my favorite thing in the world, so four focused areas. There's gonna be traffic and parking. And we talked a lot about that. I wanna say our transportation committee meeting for this month, maybe around about the twenty-second or twenty-third. You can look on our website, W W W, castellaryvillage dot org. Our calendar is there. I say that because at our next transportation meeting, committee meeting, we will be discussing, we're beginning to talk about the parking plan. I know many of us in this room have been involved with it for years already. It's now time to revisit that parking plan, update, get it put to, and then get it over to the city. So that's traffic and parking, and then we have public transportation. In our city, I mean, in our neighborhood, we may have one or two bus stops, we're on Peter Street. So we don't have much public transportation. I take more everywhere, so I'm big on it, and I would like to see a lot more public transportation. But that's what's going on there. Sidewalks and pedestrians, so that's from the bridge to broken sidewalks throughout the neighborhood. We really want people to be able to walk, ask people if you are already in our neighborhood. And then there is light and visual transportation. That's Atlanta's term for scooters and bikes stations to live. So we really need to look at where these things are parked, making sure that there are enough bike racks for them, with areas of scooters and bikes are all over the place. So that's our transportation. Maybe one of our last ones, economic development. I'm gonna run through that. So that's licenses and permits. As you know, business comes in, I'll open a restaurant for that. Smith likes the public. There's contracts and agreements. This is a big one that I think all of us have made witness where a business coming into a neighborhood, they say that they're gonna wash cars, and next we know they're selling burgers. They say that they're gonna open up at nine in the morning, and next we know they're not really opening until ten at night. So what contracts and agreements is about is really working with the businesses in the neighborhood to keep them, as it says, they're honest, sticking to what they say they're gonna stick to, really holding them to the application that they're submitting to the neighborhood, also to the interviews. New business coordination, that's just new business coordination. Businesses that wanna come into the neighborhood, that are gonna come to the neighborhood. Right now, we have about eleven or twelve vacant commercial spaces in our neighborhood. I know the Fly Kids, we're gonna fly this furniture store over on Peter Street, they just left. So we will have new businesses coming in that want to be in Castleberry Village, so we want to start working with them, ensuring that again, we have the right frequency, et cetera. And lastly, there's tourism and night night. As you know, right next to the stadium, we got a lot of people walking through our neighborhood, visiting our neighborhood, Airbnb. We have two hotels. There's gonna be at the Clarion on one side, and we have Hard Rock here. And then there's, again, there's a huge new one, Anthem, that's one across the street. So we really wanna get a hold on our tourism and our night night, I think, also. Neighborhood relations, so that's gonna be our visual arts and also our film. I think Art of the Season, if you wanna raise your hand. Ethan's really working right now on our plan. There's some talks right now in the neighborhood about a Castleberry Film Festival. I know that goes out to the Tribeca Film Festival out in New York. You can kind of imagine that we want to do something similar to that. So there's just talks around that right now. The arts, there's Pete Parker right now, he's working on selecting a lot of locations throughout our neighborhood for more public art museums. So he's working on that right now, and we'll update that, and we'll share that with everyone. And we'll share that for input as well. We want, maybe we missed something along the way. Going into, there's health and education, and that is a lot about programs. There's about, I don't know, at least ten different businesses or organizations that are here in Castleberry that are already doing programs in our city. Right up against the art program for youth, right over itself, um, film program for the youth, whatever it is. We have tons in our neighborhood already, and we wanna bring more, or find ways to highlight them. Sports and recreation, we pretty much have that down with, um, Wayne Pinnison. Yeah, the Castleberry Village Athletic Club, they already do a lot of great work, they do fun field days. They've just already done a great job when it comes to keeping the neighborhood together and neighborhood relations. And then lastly, there's history and culture. As I mentioned earlier, this is a historic district, but even beyond that, Castleberry's a cool place. There's arts, there's films that we have, and we really wanna be highlighting the culture and the history in our neighborhood. And that, so it includes a lot of our sign topics as well. Bringing back the big metal sign that I believe is gonna go right up here in front of the bridge. So we're talking about history and culture, we're really talking about highlighting what Castleberry is, when it comes to arts and film and all that other stuff. Last but not least, I think there's housing and construction, so there's just new development. So if you're interested in all of the things that are happening around us here, this is gonna be your committee. Also, regulation, that's gonna do a lot of that, Airbnb regulations, rental regulations. Accessibility, that's me, very near and dear to my heart, so that really talks about just true accessibility. Eighteen accessibility, as buildings are being built, as construction they've done in our neighborhood, we wanna make sure that things are accessible for everyone. And then lastly, there's property conversions. Being in Castleberry Village, as we know, there are a lot of buildings that are converted from commercial to residential, or residential to commercial. So we really wanna keep an eye on that, especially with the same laws. Meeting schedule, this will just be sent out. I won't really go through all this, but as our executive committee, our transportation utilities, those two committees are gonna be together. Economic development, that's about business, that's gonna be by itself. We have our general body meeting, which is the third Monday, we're at our general body meeting right now. And then we have landings and development, those are gonna be put together. Our NPU general body, that's up there, really fast, there's the neighborhood association, and then there's your NPU right above the neighborhood association. So if you're wondering, what's the NPU? That stands for neighborhood planning unit, Castleberry Village, downtown, Old Core Fort. We are all grouped in together into one neighborhood planning unit, so that's NPUM. So that's a very important meeting that you also may wanna start attending. A lot of information council there. Stating security was there, and then lastly, the planning and neighborhood relations are being worked together. We will send this out to everybody, just for a fresh show, updating the website as well, so all of this information will be there. When it comes to the schedule, that is certainly there already on our calendar, so you can have the website now and visit it. Any questions? Yes?
Yes, so for the committee meetings, are those virtual or the meeting presentations? Probably getting a little bit of a question.
The hope is that all of our meetings are going to be, I mean, hybrid, and the other company person as well as meeting online. That's the goal, but we will really be needing, kind of dealing with all of our committee chairs, for them to really decide and figure out what works best for their committee. But the goal, certainly, to have it hybrid, so that everyone knows.
So if you're ready out of the competition too, the link is on the website?
So yeah, I personally will be at that meeting, so yeah, that one, the link is not on the website now for the Zoom. But for that one, I will ensure that there's Zoom. I know a lot of people really wanna be involved in the conversation of how traffic. Any other questions about the committees? Anybody wanna join the committee? We're getting it really fast. Let me just say, one, two, three, four, okay, all right. Cool, I'm just testing to see what we got going on. Awesome, that's it, I'm good.
Are you signing up?
Um, sign up, you can sign up, D P at Castleberry. I'm Joe Sharp, I'm the vice president, I'll get him a little bit later. How's everybody doing? Wanna join the committee, um, you have D P, I mean, email D P at castleberryvillage dot org. But again, everyone in this room will probably be receiving an email over the next couple of days explaining all of these committees, more of a committee specification, where you'll be able to click directly on each one, and we'll send each committee and myself an email as a matter of time about it. Any other questions about the committees? That's it, all right, I'm gonna turn it back over to this president.
Sir? All right, so just real quick on the treasure reports. Our numbers are pretty much flat line through the year as our membership increases, and as we spend a little bit to fund some of the events and some of the things that we have planned. It pretty much stays flat line, so we're right at, right around the sixty thousand dollar mark. So just go for it. See if this thing will work through now. And then as part of the secretarial duties, we do request that for those of you that hated it, you can go ahead and scan this QR code. I know most of you guys have already scanned it. But this is your- Um, but this is your attendance, and again, you must be at two meetings prior to any voting. Um, so please, uh, scan the code, sign in. If you haven't done that, go ahead, that'll be good, we'll give you a few seconds here. It will be available at the end as well. Let's go ahead and answer the next slide. All right, now we have some of the committee reports. First up, Carrie. You knew it was going to be.
I knew it was coming at some point.
Yeah. And we are live on the camera right here.
We are live on the camera. Oh, that means I have to get up here. Okay. Can you see me? Okay, there, all right. Like, there. So, I'm Carrie Burns. I've, um, been in the neighborhood twenty-plus years, and for a number of those years, I've been co- liaisoned. And what that essentially means is that when the film office, now for the city, which didn't used to exist, it was only for the state, we'd come in, they were production, and we'd connect them with us to make sure that everybody was properly notified. That generally happens. However, I get a lot of texts asking, is this permanent? You didn't get an email from me? It's probably not permanent. But filming on private property is not required to have a permit. So if you see filming that's happening, it, it doesn't hurt to record it, but there's also information on the filming page of the website that provides you with information on how to reach out to the city of Atlanta Film Office. And it's important for them to know, because there are now productions, because of Marvel and some of the larger productions they come through, that do not have to go through us. They will basically purchase monthly permits that require them nothing. Now, if it is simulated gunfire, street closures, lane closures, intermittent traffic control, which is basically where they hold you for five minutes max, and then they let you go, those have to come through us. But if you see somebody filming a lot next to you, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're illegally filming. Um, film brings a lot of attention to our neighborhood. We have had filming here since almost the beginning, and, let's say, since nineteen eighty-two. Um, I can give you the list, but you can also see it on the filming page of the website. And it brings a lot of money to buildings, it brings a lot of money to the neighborhood. It also brings frustration. So a lot of the onus is on us to properly communicate, and that's why my job as film liaison is to work with the buildings that are impacted, to make sure that that is minimized, so that everybody makes money, and they get a good movie, or TV show. I can't help with negotiating money, which is probably the number one question I get. But if you're interested in having filming on your property, you can listen to a couple of resources throughout the state, which are listed on the filming page of the website, and we have a form that you can fill out, also on the filming page. And I sent out a notification today on Nextdoor. Who's on Nextdoor? Okay, so a little bit, I know not everybody likes Nextdoor. I get that. But we don't really have a single way to communicate with everybody at once unless we go through the HOA boards. So because of that, a lot of times, if I have a request for production, I will post it on Nextdoor, only to our neighborhood, because they're specifically looking for things, and they always ask us for photos. So if you go to Nextdoor, and you should basically see it, but you go to Nextdoor, or the Cassavary Hill community, you'll see a post that I did today for a location for a commercial shoot, that is looking for a very traditional lawn, and potentially a group home. So that's a good example, and... Do you like a good example? I'll just ask if you have any questions.
Did you post filming in Nextdoor, or did you put it on the Cassavary website?
We don't, because normally, so the question was, we post it on the website, we're also, only on Nextdoor, also on the website. Problem is, is the turnaround is usually a little short, um, because they're actively scouting. We haven't posted it on the website. There's a little bit of a confidentiality thing of that, I've not gone to a lot of, of posting publicly. So I, I will say, one of the big things, though, the, when filming is confirmed, the filming page of the website will be updated with a notification letter, a traffic control plan that shows any streets that will be closed, and any contact information for the locations department. So once it's confirmed, we'll always see it on the website. In advance of that, we haven't, but we can certainly look at that. Um, that's actually a really great question.
Yeah, the outdoor, what is outdoor, is?
Nextdoor. It's, 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 Nextdoor is. Yeah, no, I get that.
Thank you.
So that's a great question. And yeah, if, if the turnaround time gives a little bit of leeway, we could totally close that out. Any other quick questions or alternative project? You can reach me at film@cassavaryhill.org. And then I encourage, you know, again, check with your building, because not every building wants filming. So you do need to make sure that your building is okay with you posting that your place is available to rent for pressure.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Let's see here, we got a couple of committees that are not represented. We did hold an economic development meeting, um, and that was a very eye-opening for a lot of folks to see all the businesses and, uh, some of the conversations that were had in there. But please join the economic development meeting if you're interested in it. Transportation, as you guys are well aware, the bridge just opened up. We do have a transportation committee. Um, transportation committee, as Drew said, is going to meet a little bit later on. We'll send you guys the, uh, actual schedule of when the neighborhood relations. Again, another, uh, subcommittee or committee meeting that we will have, and then planning. And we have, well, we have Diana here from the planning committee. Do you want to speak, or are you good?
Um, not, not good.
Okay, not a problem, not a problem. And now, let's, uh, discuss the voting matters here, real quick, here. Drew, you want to take this one? Switch places?
Sure.
All right. Sorry about the technical.
So really fast, uh, the companies are just petway stations, so like the executive committee meeting, um, what we discussed for installing petway stations throughout the neighborhood. These, um, the ones that you see in the picture are pretty much the ones that we were looking at going for. Uh, why don't we put this on, they don't have, they have a trash bin that's attached to them, because that would be additional work for whoever is actually going to be cleaning them. So instead, we're just going to go along with the baggy, by themselves, we're going to find a little small, even more trash bins around our neighborhood. I know many of us are going to crack there, but all the dog owners know what's poop hill. Um, and there, there are no petway stations, and there's a trash bin just on one side and not the other. So right now, what we want to do, and hoping that someone can make a motion for it, is us, for us to... Before we do that, are there any questions about petway stations? All right.
I would just say, it's, okay, I don't own the dog, but I love the dog, okay, no. But the, the, every day, you know, all the sidewalks, they, they, sometimes, a lot, um, so do we have any other, you know, places for the dogs to, wherever to go? Other than, you don't have a big setup, then, whatever.
Yeah, um, to be honest, I just, I don't think so. I wish we had more green spaces around the neighborhood or anything.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of development, I, I can see it, it works.
Um, and if that's something I would say, maybe we can revisit that in utilities committee, or even like the other landings, talking about more green spaces throughout the neighborhood. I know for sure, um, as many of us already know, right here at Cassavary, um, Park, there will be a physical park, so that's the name of the development with all the apartments attached to Park and Rock Cafe. But right in front of it, there's going to be a huge park, and that will be called Cassavary Park for everyone in the neighborhood to use, so I think that would be hopefully.
A dog park?
Uh, and we just, it'll be a public park, the green space, it won't be a dog park. But I do know that a dog park is something that also has been discussed in the neighborhood before, and I think that it should be a revisited conversation also. That being said, then we're looking for someone to make a motion to approve the spending for ten petway stations.
Question?
Question?
Go for it.
A motion, okay, you have a second? Secondly, all right, we will call for vote now. All in favor, oh, sorry, oh, I'm sorry, discussion? So, uh, for those that are in, um, the audience, and also online, um, as many of you know, you have to have attended two meetings. Um, we have a twelve-month period or a hundred-month period, and we're qualified to, um, be able to vote, and we have to have your membership used pay for individuals, that's seventy-five dollars. So just moving that forward, for those that, you know you're not a member, please, I'm just saying, but if you do know you're a member, we're going to go ahead and take the vote then. So with that being said, all in favor? Can you hold it a little bit higher for me, I'm going to start over here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, I count thirteen. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Motion is very awesome. We're going to sleep that way stations. Thank you all so much. Questions? So now that we've actually done the approval, what we're going to do is we're going to put this on the utilities committee schedule, and we're going to really work out the timeline, and we're going to work out all the locations throughout the neighborhood as well. Um, and also people that come to the actual signing, so we know we want just along without the trash bins, but we don't know which exactly, that brand, so we'll discuss that a little bit more at the utilities committee meeting. And again, all of these notices will be sent out, so if you're, um, if you're subscribed to our newsletter, you will get a, a, a notification about everything that we're talking about all the meetings.
All right, thank you, Drew. Um, so anyhow, the next up we have is just the, um, next general body meeting. It will be held on three twenty. Uh, the location has not been determined yet, as again, you guys are, some of you guys are familiar with, we are rotating around the neighborhood to, uh, allow other businesses. And speaking of businesses, why don't we give a big round of applause to CJ back there for opening his doors up? You guys haven't been to this moment sound yet, they're actually not open on Mondays. He specially opened his doors just for us and brought in some staff to help us, uh, have to facilitate this event. And as you guys can see, pretty much every seat in this room is getting up right now. So thank you again, CJ, it really means a lot, thank you. Um, so, uh, this one's theme was based on utilities, infrastructure, and construction new development. Next month's meeting is going to be transportation. Uh, if you have interest, interest in joining that committee and also being involved in the discussion, uh, that's a meeting you don't want to miss. So you got the transportation committee meeting, and then you also have the general body meeting, where we will be talking about, uh, the details to the general public. See if this works here? Maybe?
Question, quick question. Would the transportation committee solve how it works on this?
Uh, if you have any mail, transportation at cassavaryhill.org, and someone pulls from that to you from your group. And then, there we go. So once again, everybody, thank you guys so much for showing up. If you are not a member, uh, please, uh, consider joining, it's just twenty-five dollars. It really helps and goes a long way, you can go through a lot of this stuff. Uh, and also, if you have, um, signed in, the attendance is on the left, so attendance is on the left, a membership is on the right. Thank you guys, everybody, and if you have some food back here as well, uh, provided by CJ. Thank him again, solicit his, definitely patronize his business here, uh, he's a great asset to our community, and thank you everybody for showing up, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? All right, there we go, now it's over.
...